I'm going to be at the local. Edward Bino.
Here.
Donald Matisse.
Here.
Frederick Stewart.
Here.
Betty Harris Howard.
Here.
Jamie Bull.
Here.
Erin Chase.
Here.
Jim King. Hello, seven. I'll keep my eye out, he's not here yet. Um, Richard Dory.
Here.
And Brett McCarthy.
President.
Thank you all. Our first item on the agenda is is case number twenty-four, day oh one. Ninety-five U. Von Wayne, insisting over request for a conditional use permit to expand a legally non-conforming cottage in the shoreline zone, Richard Jones and Susan Barnes, map oh two five lot oh oh five, continued from February fourteenth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four. At the planning board meeting. Do you have something to explain for us for tonight?
Yes. Now leaving today. Representing the actions. And at the last meeting, there were a couple of questions that that cottage design.
Yeah.
The designer was working on modifying the height. So that will mean the winter ordinance. On the other two, we wanted clarification on. One is the thirty percent expansion to include the existing footprint area that's within twenty-five feet. And Dawn has more information on that. She may have handed that to the board. So we want to talk about that. And then the second thing was the drains going toward the lake. And we've got some more information on that, just a couple of things. So the the thirty percent expansion, the question was at the last meeting, whether or not that could be used for the expansion, which would be beyond twenty-five feet. And in the winter ordinance, I believe it allows it. And then in addition to that, we've called some important officers, reached out to D E P and got an opinion back. That's correct. Um, if thirty percent can be applied to the portion is within twenty-five feet. So just wanted to make sure that that was acceptable before the cottage revisions finalized. And then second, on the drains going toward the lake, um, I submitted to D E P back in January, a permit by rule application for earth disturbance. And it's earned and I sent that form to Dawn today, an outfall pipe when it's called. Um, and maybe use the same plan that you have and approved the outfall pipes. The benefit to its design, putting in the move rip edge filters and putting them underground and into the foundation drain of the building is it really cleans the storm water and it cools it at certain times of the year, hot times of the year, putting it underground. So the water that's out there is to the pond is really a better quality than what you'd have at times running over the ground to the lake. So D E P actually promotes those. Um, and we use it as a standard on not only projects like this, but also commercial projects that require a stormwater permit from D E P. Um, there's now, you all know, in addition to quantity limitations, um, there's also a quality design and it has to be considered. And one of the designs we use to meet those standards is these root rip edge filters going underground and then daylighting on site, obviously at a lower elevation. And in this case, even though it's adjacent to the lake, um, we put in a small rip wrap plunge pool. There's, there's not a significant flow coming out. It actually slows it down when it goes down through the filter, um, through the under drain by toward the lake. So I think, and D E P agrees, and then you may have something from Bill Monagle that I haven't seen yet. Um, that's a better way to take care of storm water, even when you're adjacent and close to the lake like this project is. So those are the two things that we'd like to get clarification on the thirty percent expansion being available and that these under drain pipes coming from the root group age filters are acceptable.
Does anyone on board have one instructions?
Sure.
Um, I had a comment and question. Uh, first of all, uh, in regard to the my thirty percent expansion, I believe I was the one that raised that concern about that section notes. Yeah. To the shoreline side of the twenty-five foot zone. Um, reading the ordinance, it still looks a little bit ambiguous, but uh, I, I certainly can appreciate the interpretation of allowing the entire structure. And I think that uh, a reading certainly is reasonable reading to allow that thought. Uh, at this point, certainly I have no problem with that. I'm going to suggest we, when we update our ordinance, we might want to clarify that a bit, just so that in the future, no one else that misinterprets that. Uh, the uh, so I'm glad we get that resolved and that that shouldn't impact the budget. Um, the other question is just sort of interested me regarding to these outfall drains. Um, the, the pipes going uh, to the uh, basin, well, I wouldn't call a catch basin, but the uh, here where the outfall pointed, are those pipes perforated or they're solid pipe?
Perforated.
There, okay, great. So, so the, there's opportunity for infiltration even before they get to the outfall point.
That's correct.
Oh, okay. Yeah. No, that sounds great. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, um, I just want to interrupt to let you know, and I'm sure you've all seen it now, but the um, termify rule application that has the submit date on it, um, is here for you to look at and also the email from, um, the uh, from Bill Monaco.
Yes.
Yeah. We all set with our paper? Okay, um, does anyone else have any further comments to make?
I, I do. Um, so, I mean, I, 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 I want to explain some rationale a little bit more. Um, the fact that you are installing better drains, great. The fact that you're installing drains, great. Everything about that is great, except for the location of the drains and the fact that if you weren't adding a basement to this place, that wouldn't be needed. And the basement is three feet below ground because you're up against the height limitation. So from a planning work perspective, you could just add a frost wall, then your drain could be up three feet high. Your drains could be ten, twenty feet closer to the building itself. So it's really not a question of the location of the drains, the fact that drains exist. The question is, should we allow a basement being built that close to the water? It's going to create drains right next to the lake. So does everybody kind of get my understanding is that they're asking for permission to put a basement under this building? They're doing what they can, but the question is, should we allow that on a structure this close to the lake? Because it is going to have some infiltration. Hopefully they'll wrap it with fabric, wrap it with stone, so that the idea with wrapping it with fabric, when you put this underground drain and it's going to be, you know, buried in stone, is you're going to keep the, the natural groundwater from coming in. So you're going to keep the, you know, sediment out, things like that, so that that's not going to go directly into the, into the lake. My concern is the location and the reason the location has to be there is because of the elevation of that basement. If the basement was four feet shorter, those drains could be right next to the building and it wouldn't be a problem. It's because they have to be at that elevation so that they can actually drain downhill, that they have to be so close to the lake. So every foot that we picked that building up, we could move those drains another four feet closer to the building and less close to the water. So my original objection is that they're so close to the water. And I get there's a height limitation. I get all the other concerns, so I understand this limitation. But as a board, our job is to protect the water and I, I appreciate the drains. I appreciate everything about the design. The question to me really came down to, should we allow a basement? You know, or should we just say they have to put in frost walls? Because putting in a basement is going to require drains and it's going to require possible additional direct routes for sedimentation and for, you know, whatever comes down in the runoff to actually go into the lake almost directly. There'll be a small settling pool, but that's still not there. That's why I was originally thinking a French drain, but just looking at the project later, the next day, I said, that would be challenging, you know, because again, the basement is so low, it's three feet below the existing ground level. And the reason they don't want to lift that up is plain and simple, because they, they have a height limitation because they're so close to the lake. So I'm just not saying one way or the other. My opinion, my own opinion is I'm not going to approve it because I don't think that basement should be added. That's just my opinion and I just wanted to voice the rationale behind it. Is they're doing everything they possibly can. And I agree with the drains, I agree with everything about it. But should we be allowing a basement to be added to a building that close to the water? That's my only concern. What, based on this, I think you said if you load it by a foot, you could move it up four feet closer to that, to the building. Correct. If there's no basement, we're talking twelve feet closer potentially, yeah. Yep. And, and honestly, they could be direct drains right in front of the building. Because there is no basement, so you're not trying to collect and keep water out of the basement. Yeah, so. So it would be right at the front of the building, the drains would then have to, they would still go over the ground, but so it's whatever that or we like twenty something feet from the water. Yeah. So the drains, the plunge pool, everything could still be done, just twenty feet away from the water, not right next to the lake.
So are you saying with the basement, you have to go back?
Well, with the basement, they happen to be closer to the lake because the basement is three, three and a half feet below the ground. And you have to slope downhill so that the water, otherwise you'd have a swimming pool on the basement, right? It would be, you'd dump all the water, you'd have to have a drain that drains.
So if you move it back, it would be different.
If, if the building wasn't so close to the water, you'd have, you'd have, you'd have, my issue is the drains literally come out on the shoreline. I mean, within five feet of the actual water shoreline.
And the basement is a problem.
The basement to me is the problem with this design and well, and it's because of the proximity to the lake.
Right.
If the building was a hundred feet back and they were adding drains and it had, yeah, no problem. So everything is because the building's so close to the lake and the system that they've designed is not much, not an easy way around it. But it's the fact they're adding a basement that's creating the problem. If they didn't have the basement, you wouldn't have this problem because you, you could have drains right there where the rain runs off right at the front of the building because you don't need to keep your basement dry, you don't have a basement. It's a, you know, frost wall.
Right.
Can I ask a question? Because I wasn't here for this.
You may.
Is this the public water supply and resource protection zone or just one or the other?
Upper Narrows, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Upper Narrows? Or lower?
And it is in part of the public water supply.
And. Is it where the cliffs are, the big rocky?
No.
It's not resource protection probably?
No.
Okay.
No, and the building's twenty feet.
Further down.
The building, the front, the front of the building is only twenty feet away. That's why we had the debate about the twenty-five feet and the amount they, volume they could use.
Right.
Part of the building is, is, you know, like, I think it wasn't like twenty, I think it was twenty-nine in from the water and then the building going backwards and they were adding on backwards. And then we just had the debate about how much they could add on. But I had a concern about the drains and I was really thinking, I don't know of an easier way to engineer it. It's really just a question, should we allow the basement because that building is so close? And it's already, the building is already so low that your, your, you know, your bottom of your basement is going to be not too far off from the lake. High lake level. So that means your drains have to go all the way down to the water. So that was really my concern is should we allow a basement? Not changing the design because I don't think there is an easy way. I originally thought there was, but the more I looked at it, I said, I don't know how I designed that any different. So I'm just saying. Regardless of the basement, you have the same.
Regardless of the basement, you have the same spread footage on the roof. She's going to have the same amount of water coming off, shedding off the roof regardless of the elevation, the height of it. If the water comes off the roof, twenty, you know, actually on the backside, with the, with the pitch of a bank there, you've got a lot more opportunity for that concentration of water. The water will find a channel, it will make its own channel, have a lot more chance to pick up sediments on the way to the water. Then it's kind of what that only has a few feet across.
Yeah, I mean, potentially.
Have that regardless of.
But, but you're assuming that it, it's going to, it's going to still try to find a channel, but that's the whole idea of the vegetation, right? There's a vegetated buffer, they're not allowed to cut anything. The path can't be a direct route to the lake. Everything should be breaking up that stormwater runoff as much as possible, so that it's not carrying that sediment to the lake. So that's, that's the idea behind it. And the roof runoff is, is basically concentrated runoff, which you know will dig ditches. Now you've dumped all this water in one spot, so it's going to try to cut a path. But vegetation should try to help, but that's why drains and everything else are good. So I'm, again, it's just my, my opinion is that, you know, that basement is what's causing my concerns. Is it a real concern? No, I mean, the water's going to be relatively clean by comparison, but you're still going to get some surface runoff in through those filters. You're going to have some, some ability to filter around, um, through the sides of the building itself as you freeze and thaw. You're going to have some ability for sediment to get in there and these drains are going to provide no vegetation, no, no anything blocking it from directly distributing it to the lake. So that's, that's again, my only concern.
Anyone else?
Sir, you're concerned about water coming in other than for the distributology?
Well, yeah, and also the filters failing and, I mean, you know, drip pools eventually fill with sediment, all these things. You know, apartments last for a hundred years sort of thing, so eventually they're going to fail. And I mean, intervening drainage on the sides could go into the tops of those drains and be buried down to the water possibly. I think they'll be covered until the, until the plunge pool where they daylight. So I don't think you're going to see much of that. So it's really just a question of the system not working a hundred percent and the fact that it daylights right next to the lake.
But it's a flat, slow roof, if I remember right.
Yes. Yeah, same.
So the, almost all the water off the roof is going to go into your drain.
Correct, all of it is.
Everything else that comes from the side. It was going to come from the side anyway and that's going to go over the ground, right?
Yes.
Or it's not any worse, in fact, better because you're not getting roof water. It's just rainwater, whatever on the side. Kind of like, you know, my lawn out here. And the side that rains, the roof goes this.
No, it's that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really see the problems, honestly.
Um, yeah, so the, um, the existing also is just a shed roof and it slopes back away from the lake. Right now it's on posts, so that water just hits the ground and goes under the cottage into the lake. So the, this, the, um, the drains will definitely, or the drain would definitely be an improvement, which I agree with. Um, I, a couple of things, um, regarding the basement or not having a basement. If this were just a frost wall underneath this building, I still recommend foundation drains like you normally put in at the, at the footing of a frost wall. And this basement four is one seventy-eight. So we go down, you go down, say, five feet to the bottom of the footing from the first floor. Um, we'd be at oh roughly one eighty. So we, or one eighty-one, so we'd be a couple of feet higher with a foundation drain. So I think it would move it further away from the lake. You're right on that. If the drain was a couple of feet higher, you'd daylight sooner than you do now. But it, it wouldn't be a huge amount. But the other thing, looking at the plan that I think would work well, I, what I did, I drew those drains knowing what the elevation of the foundation drain would be at the building. And then I just went with a minimum slope of half a percent, which is pretty much flat, but it allows pipe to drain. And then, and I just ended them where that would come out of the ground, where it hit the existing contour. An improvement or something we could do to address concerns, to move them back from the lake. When you reach a point where, say, the drain is a couple of feet still below ground, it hasn't brown yet, we could have just a, a protected swale, you know, excavate and do rip wrap so that you'd be ten feet or more than they are now back from the lake and just have a, you know, protected rip wrap swale until that came out of the ground and which would be where I've shown the plunge pools. So we could still have the draining. We could stop at, say, ten plus feet shorter and then have rip wrap swale going the rest of the way to the outlet. It would be in a, you know, an excavated trench. So that would allow the water, when it comes out of the pipe, to have a ten or fifteen foot run and it would just be going through rip wrap. And normally that will just infiltrate into the ground or gets to the lake and that could be an concerns you've got, Greg, on this outlet pipe so close. And that's doable, we could do that and present it to the board with the final cottage plan, which the designer's working on at the next meeting.
Would that require a, going back to D E P for the termify rule modification?
I'd say no, because we're not getting any closer to the lake than we show now. And also that permit is for earth disturbance. And there's no like cubic yardage, like we've submitted to you what the volume's going to be, the excavation, but D E P didn't ask for that. Okay. So I'd say no, Ed, we don't have to go back. But that would be, that might alleviate some concerns. And it would move it further away from the lake. Right now, we're probably, I don't have a scale, it is a graphic scale, we're probably eight feet from the I want mine for this outlet. And if we could move it back another ten, then we'd be eighteen feet away. Oh, and one other thing too, and I talked to Bill Monagle about it and he apologized that he couldn't write you a more detailed letter, but he was taking his wife in the airport, she had to fly out this afternoon. But I talked to Bill about adding some plants, some vegetation on the lakeside of where this plunge pool is. And he thought that was a good idea. But he cautioned me against putting them right in the wall point because he said this water comes through, it will tend to wash and undermine or hurt the roots. Um, but we could do some plantings, like some shrubs on either side, but close to the end of the pipe. Which would improve in, you know, help with the quality.
It'll help with stability and it'll slow down any water that does build, so that, that's what we want. That's, that's really what we're looking for is a buffer, you know, whatever buffer we can provide. So just at least your notes about what you're going to put in there would be helpful too. So, you know, lawn is not, lawn is not good.
Right. So. Move both of them further from the lake and specify some plantings at the outlet end. That'll work.
And you'd still incorporate the plunge pool at the, after you go to the swale?
Yes. And that actually the swale would act as a plunge pool or something, but still the elements will have it. There'll be like a small dam or like a level spreader. So that as the water comes down, down the swales, the rip wrap, when it gets to that point, it really slows it down and takes all the energy out of it. And yeah, that's a standard, you probably know, um, these swales, we put level spreaders, plunge pool. So, and we can do with detail on that, so you see that as well.
Anything else to say, Mark? Well, you can bring that back to us. I don't think anyone really has an objection now, I think I reached the middle of the road here. Was there anything else you had to tell us?
Um, no, but I did mention the cottage is being redesigned, so the height limitations. But what we've talked about tonight had an effect on how all that would work. That's why I'm here for those two items. So now that was it.
Thank you, okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There are several people who are online, I don't know if they're here to speak to this item, but do you want to?
A Republican put? And we have our friend over here, if he wants to say anything. Does anyone in the public have anything to say?
Yeah, there's nothing.
There's nobody there, no?
No one's raising a hand.
All right, well, points of public hearing and.
Do you have to, do you want to take a motion?
Can you both table it to the, um, the March twenty-seventh meeting?
March twenty-seventh?
Yes, but yes, we'll table it to our meeting, twenty-seventh meeting.
Need a motion in a second. Oh, motion is?
I'll second it.
All right.
You want to vote?
Just vote all four.
In favor. Or when they be getting their paperwork together.
Yeah. All right.
Am I voting down?
Um.
It's Jim on.
Jim did not, um, so we should have established that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just did some of that. If Jim's not on, then what do we do? We only need seven, we need seven, right? So he can take Jim's place.
Rip takes Jim.
Who takes booth, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm like, well, you get this. You can vote, we just can't count it, okay?
Oh, I thought that we had some people on, no?
We have some people in the public.
There they are.
They're about the quarry, but, but Jim King is not there.
Okey dokey. Anything I don't forget?
You all comment on the minute?
At the end, that's at the end.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, other businesses, staff report and this.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why, the mineral report.
That's right. So at this point, I think we're going to do a top of the mineral. So at this point, I think we're gonna do a top of the mineral expression. And I guess you have a presentation for us.
Well, I have comments.
If I could, I just have a few notes, and I I did put this in an email, but I could go over them. Well, you'll actually, there are people who are attending remotely. So there were some things that do still need to be changed from the the document that was posted to the public and that you all have. The page numbers are going to need to be updated with these table of contents. Because this is supposed to be, your vote was to forward this to the next planning board meeting, and the only changes regarding monitoring of your quality locally. So there are a few things that do still need to be changed. So the final document would need to include page numbers updated. There's a reference to advertising in a local newspaper, and you did not discuss this before, however, we discussed it at a workshop recently, that there was some question about whether or not the newspaper was necessary. Now, that's for the zoning ordinance, this is for different ordinance, but same concept, so I just wanted to raise the question. Um, applicability, I added a section in there so that the, in accordance with the attorney's language, uh, that would make it retroactive, would make the document retroactive from the expiration of the council order. Then there, number four is, there was some language that was left in the ordinance that should have been struck out. And that was mineral extraction operations. And there was a scribbler's error, it was actually caught by Neil, so thank you. Um, so that should not have remained in there. And then I actually found some notes that I had from a previous version, that the language in number five regarding detonation of misfires did not make it into the document and didn't get caught the last meeting, so I wanna make sure that it is something you still want to incorporate. And that language was added in there in that instance. And then there is a number six that is not on your email. And it was brought to my attention that we had talked about the groundwater ordinance and the fact that the groundwater provision in this ordinance, in part of the mineral extraction, was taken out, because we did, I did not believe we had a an ordinance at that time. And and we have, or I have since found out that we do. So I cannot make any changes to this ordinance regarding groundwater since our last meeting. Um, and that was something that we had talked about, and I had indicated I would like to do. So there are no changes in it currently regarding groundwater. The current groundwater protection ordinance, um, does not allow mineral extraction. So we have one area identified on the map, and it will not allow mineral extraction, so it's excluded. There are potential other areas in town that you could look at in terms of having that groundwater ordinance exist. So that may be something you wanna flag for a future workshop. But I'm bringing to your attention for discussion that it was not added back in.
Okay.
That that's an existing provision.
Yeah. Well, we voted on these, right? We did at one point.
That, yeah.
That was. To get a yes, it's like, we must have done something like that. Okay.
Are we taking comments on this?
I can ask the notice as a public hearing.
The, uh, on the item number five, and that was language that I had suggested. Actually, seeing it in print as opposed to reciting it. It it came out a little bit awkward, and I would, uh, I would, uh, request that we make some edits in that wording to to make it a little clearer. And, uh, I could give you my proposed changes if you like. Okay, we had detonation misfires made clear outside of these times with a reference to the blasting time. And I would say at this point, outside of these times, period. Uh, and then uh, for us, but, and in place of but, had a misfire must be reported to the C E O or winter police as soon as it is recognized. We can eliminate immediately, uh, eliminate the second misfire and eliminate the not detonating. Because if it's a misfire, it didn't detonate. So there's, there's no need to be repetitive, so a period after recognized.
Okay, thank you.
Like you say, it's easier to say these things at one, you read what you said. It's, uh, it tends to sound awkward to me.
I think that sounds better.
Yeah, any comments, anybody else?
Would we say or and for the C E O and the police?
Or, I said, thinking.
If it's outside of court time?
If it's outside of C E O time, you're probably not gonna get a.
But they've gotta do blasting within the time, within nine to four, which is in Monday through Friday, so they have to do it on work time. That's why I was just thinking, I mean, none of Mark couldn't be on vacation or.
Yeah, the C E O, right, C E O might not be available.
Okay.
As opposed to trying to notify the C E O and not getting him, so you.
Well, no, you, I, the police need to be notified, that's why I was thinking, Ken. It's like, if they just called Mark, he's gonna have to call the police, because honestly, you don't want anybody wandering around until we figure out what happened.
But my thought was, just require them to notify one person, either C E O or the police, but we could require both.
I mean, even leaving a message for Mark, um, but I don't know. I'm just, yeah, I'm just thinking, like, the police need to be notified.
Yeah.
Like, I, you know, I don't think the burden should fall on Mark if somebody calls up and says, we have a misfire, and he's supposed to know, I mean, he's assistant fire chief and stuff, he knows what to do. But that seems like, you know, he may not be a code enforcement officer forever or whatever. That seems like a, that seems like it should be notified, the police. To me, that's really all.
Okay.
And they should know what to do, because that's something they would know how to deal with, I would think. Because that's public safety, that's that they need to know.
Yeah, we we could, we could potentially just scratch C E O, because they notify the winter police.
Yeah, and they could call whoever they need to.
I I guess, you know, anybody had.
I think that's a little bit more clear.
Yeah.
Makes better sense.
That situation was, what the C E O gonna do?
Right.
They're gonna call the police.
Right, exactly.
So.
Police may call the C E O.
I would hope they might, but they might call other people as well, that they would know, that's a public safety issue that they would be able to deal with, that's what they do.
So just the police, not?
Yeah.
Reported to the winter police.
Get the whole thing read again for everyone.
All right. Want me to read it again?
Sure.
I manage you here. See if I got them all.
Detonation of misfires may occur outside of these times, referring to our blasting time. A misfire must be reported to the winter police as soon as it is recognized, period. That's pretty, yep, clear and concise, right there. Not sure who can argue with that one. Well, we can argue.
Anything.
Are you gonna agree with like that? One more change, just, you want us to vote on it, uh, you think?
Well, you need to take public input and then have more deliberation.
Well, going back to, uh, number two, did we, maybe it was something about the last meeting, did that go over there?
I don't know how I feel about this.
That's, I.
Posting in the newspaper or just?
That's right.
I mean, there's people out there that don't use email and Facebook.
I disagree with it.
I'm not sure.
I feel like there's people that still, that there's, and it's a small niche, but you can't require them to use. And listen, some of the people that don't use it, don't use it for a reason, because they don't know how to use it. And they're not gonna be able to learn how to use it. That time has gone and passed. So I just.
Asking to buy one.
Yeah, and I will tell you, I.
There's gonna be a few that.
No, they send it to you, they add a pay for it. Don't you guys just get it in the mail?
Oh, it's a free. It's a free advertiser, yeah.
I've read our notices in the in the newspaper. Sometimes that's how I find out what we're doing, the next meeting, I'm like, oh, look at that.
John, I don't forget them right when you put them in, so you won't know what's happening.
We are using K B C O G temporarily, because the other newspaper, they closed for part of the winter, and they're supposed to start again. So we did use K B C O G just recently, not K B C O G. I mean, how, is it very crazy expensive to put the notice in?
Yeah, yes, it is. Crazy expensive is a very, very easy way to say it. I contend with the thousands of dollars I spend in every watershed, every female project, thousands of dollars to post ads. The newspapers got you over a barrel, and they're gonna charge you.
So what's another way to do it without having to use the internet? Posting it at the town office on a bulletin board or something?
That's on there, that's, that's, the second set is already on there. So, you know, they're posting it at the town hall, town websites, Facebook, and alerts, you know, email alerts. If somebody signs up for it, is that something that that people would sign up for, they can get email alerts from the town?
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's what I thought they did, yeah.
And I have one more suggestion, which is the library we're talking about. I mean, we, I've in the past posted public meetings that if the library has a bulletin board, which they usually do. Yeah. So that's something you could add that might alleviate some of that concern. So like, if we did that, would we be able to make that notice that that's happening? You're no longer, like, in the newspaper, like, have a little ad and be like, moving forward so citizens know meetings will no longer be posted here in this newspaper, and please see. I don't know, I'm just trying to think, like, think about.
They do read it, that they have an option, you told them where the options are.
Like my, say, my grandfather is sitting there, he reads the newspaper every, every week, and all of a sudden, it stops.
Is it, is it not a state requirement that it has to be posted in the newspaper, these notices? Okay, all right.
Everyone thinks that, yeah.
It used to be.
Yeah, it used to be.
I hate wasting money, but I also don't, I get nervous about the idea of people not having an open availability for them to to find out information like this, especially if that's how it's always been done. Something should be.
Post one more notice and tell them that you're not gonna do it.
That's it, this is it.
They could find it at the library or.
You need to drive into town now.
Yep, I mean.
Well, they used to post those wanted posters like.
Right?
In the post office, every.
So people are interested, they're gonna have to go and make a, make an effort to find out what's going on.
If you wanna know, you can know.
They don't want email.
Yes, I agree with you.
Usually the ones that don't want email probably aren't as interested in what we do here, I don't know.
I mean, it's sad, but the cost is prohibitive. And it's playing better places to put it.
I can add one more, please, to muck things up. Um, so as a result of this, making a proposal to the council that they amend the fee schedule. And that would sort of include a fee for mineral extraction, um, application. And I'm also proposing a noticing fee, because we currently notice the butters, and that takes up Doug's time to do that. I did not include the newspaper notification in that, because it's a lot of money, because the newspaper, and it changes, so it's an option, it would be a little difficult, I think, to implement, but we could make it so that the fee covers the advertising. I'm not exactly sure how I do that yet, but it was something we could examine, if that's, if there's a real concern about not.
Which fee you're talking about?
I'm sorry, the fee for the advertisement in the newspaper, we could pass it along potentially.
Yeah, what, which fees are you gonna include?
Oh, I'm sorry, application fees.
For?
So.
Just building permits or for for mineral extraction?
Yeah, if you have an application for mineral extraction, a site that you're gonna develop under this ordinance, there's a.
I know you're talking about all.
How much did we spend on newspaper notifications last year for twenty twenty-three? I'm just curious, we know a number.
I don't know, Ken.
Like, if it's two thousand dollars a year, that's.
Oh, God, yeah.
Who cares?
I mean, the, the, the weekly one probably isn't as bad, because it's lots and lots of ads.
Yeah.
And it's very, you know, it's a publicly distributed paper, but the K J, I can tell you, you know, a couple ads and you're at two thousand.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's very, very expensive. Why are we publishing and notifying the butters? Why aren't we requiring an applicant to do that and then verify, give us the list, here's the butters they sent it to? I think that's probably why, is is to make sure that it happens. And I think the town's the one on the hook to notify them.
Can I, so there are places that do that. Um, when I came here, there's this small town feel, it is a small town. And so, I know personally, I'm trying to keep things from being too complicated, too much red tape. That's, that is a, um, a process that that's used in other towns, I mean, you could do it here, but when we have property owners come in, they have a shoreline application, and, you know, it's, depend, it depends, you you guys can consider that, and I can create, uh, the language that would make that happen, but it is more red tape, more, you know, a developer, no problem, that's what they do. Joe Schmelz doing his stuff, yeah. I think it's a little bit too much to put on the individual person.
I think it's reasonable, though, that, to to increase the fee to cover that, though. I I think that's reasonable, because we're hiring people, if they're gonna be using those services, we, they should be paying for them. And that's not a service like the clerk's office that everybody would use, that's a service that only people putting the applications in would use. So I think that's reasonable to assess them the fee of, or some, some fee, you're probably not gonna cover all of the costs, but, you know, at least like the mailing and maybe a couple hours of somebody's time or something like that.
Just have that built into the cost of the application.
Just put it in the fee, and then, then I think you'd be covered.
Add an extra five, ten bucks for some stamps and some verifications.
Page numbers?
You're talking about number two here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, which is article four five V one.
Yep.
Yeah, so in, I am looking right places, this is one advertiser, public hearing, seven days. I look in the right place, page, page nine? I'm in the actual.
Oh, you're in. You're in the actual.
I'm in the actual. We hit the road. That's what we're talking about, right?
Yes. Go there.
So, the preceding lines is at the expense of the applicant the planning board shall. And we're talking about who's paying for it, that's what we were just talking about.
That's good.
And we spelled it out here. I guess we're debating whether we wanna do it, right?
Well, the newspaper one is the one we were talking about dropping. The rest of it, I think we're leaving.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, line one is about local newspapers, right?
Yeah.
So my question was, are we leaving it or not? That was the discussion, right?
Yes. I personally would love to see how much we spent last year, to see if it's, if it is astronomical, then maybe we do put a couple notifications out and say, we're no longer notifying you this way, these are the ways that you could look into it, we did our due diligence. But if it's a lot of money.
Again, this is at the expense of the applicant, right?
Right now, it's not, no.
Yeah, it is.
No, I think that's what you're saying.
Read it, it's in there.
Where, where, where are we at?
Page nine.
Page nine.
Public hearing, all in all, the track allocation for our public hearing. Application for planning board shall. And then we're debating number one.
Oh.
Here it says at the expense of the applicant.
Yeah, that's how I read it. And that's what I'm hearing you say.
I don't think the rest of the app. Everything, yeah, just, I guess, for this, I didn't realize we put that in there.
You don't wanna do that.
There you go.
You're saying, that's what we're saying. All right.
We already have it.
Yeah. That's my board net.
Are we, are you keeping it in then or not? I'm not.
Well, they're paying for it.
But in general, we should do the same thing across the board, if we're gonna do newspaper notifications for mineral ordinance, we should do it for everything. Or don't do it for anybody, and just have it be.
Or what other things to be?
Shoreland, any planning board meeting, we put notifications in, don't we? Yeah, we say what's coming up, what date, what the cases are.
Can we just, what other applications are, is that part of a requirement on an applicant? Yeah, I don't think it is.
No.
Is this the only?
This, right now, as it's written, would be, yes.
Well, right now, we're not debating this general, anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
We could talk about that later.
It is, but if we, if we leave this in here or take it out in here, it is relevant to everything else. If we're gonna keep everything.
No, this is only the, uh, the mineral extraction.
Right, I'm saying. But we don't require anybody else to pay for notices outside of this.
We're not assessing anybody else.
So it's just for this? Okay.
All right.
But we're not debating that right now.
Does anybody have anything else to add? Do you think we should see how many people want it to go one way or the other? Does anybody have anything else to add? Do you think we should see how many people want it to go one way or the other?
Or do you wanna get public input before we go too much further?
Well, we, we were happy when we read this.
Yeah, we were.
So I'd say if we don't make any moves, then it's, it is what it is. And we should at some point, I suppose.
Approve these at least.
Uh, yes, approve this, just get through this.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, it's something to consider for other.
We all agree with you, leaving it alone.
Um, school agrees with number two.
Well, actually, it's number one and.
Oh, yes.
One, B one.
I was, who agrees with?
If we agree with that.
With the actual.
With the current language, yeah.
Yeah. With the ordinance, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, lunch?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
It's like a good idea. For when we do, yeah.
It is, another workshop.
Don, are you happy with that at this point?
I feel clear.
Point, leave it.
I, it's, I guess I'm not making a recommendation either way, I just raised the question.
Can we do, can we leave it?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so we agreed that we want it left there and move on.
That's what I have.
Okay.
So did you wanna motion that these five things be accepted with Ed's adjustments to their, I don't know, that's what I meant.
Even in the straw poll, ultimately, the board's gonna need to make a motion. Um, unless you continue it, if you're ready to make a decision tonight, the, what the action would be to either move it forward to the council with a recommendation to utilize it as is as proposed this evening, or propose some modifications. And move it to the council for their review with the modifications.
Yeah.
Those are the two that I see, unless, unless there's information that you need to have still or um, questions that need to be answered, in which case you could table it or continue it.
But, but we don't wanna do either of those until we hear from the public, right?
Yes.
So, correct.
There are four members of the public that are on hearing of the eighth tablet. There's, there's initials A, K A T, Matt Kelland and Steve McDermott are all here. And they may, and we have others also.
Can you hit them? You, you wanna open the, oh, sorry, I opened the public portion of the me, of this long meeting. On the ordinance. Anyone wanna talk?
No raising hands yet.
Alright, uh, Gil Susie, I think I'm an honorary member of the planning board by now. Five hundred days into this, uh, when we originally brought this up, some of our main concerns were the water, the water runoff. The air quality, thank you for, for taking care of all those issues. One of the major issues that we had was with the blasting values. The way the blasting values is set right now, like one point two five inch per second is the, the E P standard. Which is based on the U S Bureau of Mines Report eighty five oh seven, which again, if you've been reading my communications, you, you've read that. The Bureau itself recommends in their conclusions on page sixty four. Conclusion number eight, that blasting value should be reduced to point five inch per second in order to avoid structural damage, infrastructure damage, and damage to wells. And that's our major concerns, the damage to wells of these blast waves traveling. At point five, Oregon and Nevada, while we adopted them amongst the western states. At point five inch per second, it still allows the operator to blast away. It doesn't prevent blasting, it's not a little firecracker or explosion, still pretty strong explosion. However, again, it's sixty percent or more less than, uh, what's being recommended right now in the ordinance. I guess what concerns me is on the third paragraph of that, that fourteen, whatever, whatever it is, I think it's H. Um, you, you basically state that the planning board in future time can reduce the blasting values as the sea's fed. I guess I'm asking the planning board tonight, let's not wait until there's irreparable damages to wells and infrastructure. Before we, the light comes on and we reduce blasting values, at least reduce the blasting values to point five. It's just an extra addendum that you need to put in there and, again, it's, you know, it's been done. It, 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 folks are doing this across the country and across the world, actually, so. Uh, I do appreciate your time again for the last, uh, two years, almost two years that we've been at this, year and a half anyways. Uh, I think we've come a long ways, I've researched over two hundred websites. Uh, got over four hundred documents downloaded, I've gotten one heck of an education on this. And, uh, but I, I do appreciate all of you, the efforts, the new members, sorry, sorry to bore you with the details, but uh, again, uh, we've got, we've got almost all the pieces together. Uh, let's do the right thing for the community and let's reduce those blasting values to point five. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Which is only here, no. On three eight.
Three. Well, that's made it easier to read. Well, it's just saying that we're meeting D E P standards, so we have to add an addendum if they were to actually lower that standard.
What's the D E P standard level again?
One point two five inch per second. Now, I read something in the state records where if they use a lower rate, they can avoid having to monitor the blast.
Yep.
Is that what this is or not, you know?
The, the lowering of the blast values at the, at the, uh, uh, the operator, the, the drilling company is the one who decides that. So I can't remember when the original blasting plan that had been submitted. Uh, I've got a copy of it somewhere, if you remember right, about a year ago, the blasting company submitted a blasting plan. And I don't know what the value they were using, but it, it depends on how much anphol, ammonium, nitrate and, and fuel oil they put in the ground. Gives us the, the blast value. By reducing that, they don't have to put the seismometers all over the place and, you know, by reducing that value, they don't have to put seismometer. Again, it saves them money on one end, but, but it's a lower blast, right? It's a lower blast.
Is that number, excuse me, you're suggesting what number?
Point five, half, half an inch per second. And again, there's, there's sixty eight pages of math and algebra in between the opening of the document and this conclusion. Uh, I'll be honest with you, I can't follow all of it, but it, it propagates, the, the, the waves propagate themselves to a point where, again, one point two five is the absolute max when it come, when it comes to, to infrastructure. They can in some remote areas get a waiver, and I'm talking, you know, the, the, the western mountains, they can get a waiver and go up to two inch. Uh, per second, but, uh, again, it, it requires all kinds of permits and because again, you're also damaging the aquifers, you know, what goes this way as a blast value also goes down to some, you know, to some extent. Again, there's an algebraic scale that they use in that document that I, I forward to you folks. So, but again, their conclusion from nineteen eighty clearly states that by reducing the value to half an inch per second really saves a lot of damage to the infrastructure, foundations, wells, but it also saves an awful lot of complaints to you know, the, the operators and then town officials, they, they didn't mention town officials, they mentioned, you know, the, the, the folks who work in this environment, so.
Any comments from?
I mean, it's reasonable, if, if, you know, if we're thinking about that, would we wanna reduce down the amount of area in which, you know, right now, we have a distance around that we're asking them to be doing monitoring of how those foundations and wells. You know, if we're gonna reduce down the blast range, um, impact, should we reduce that range as well? Just something to discuss. Um, I don't see it as a problem, but I'm always trying to protect the town, you know, with the town be open up to any kind of a issue with lowering that number, I can't think. I can't think of how it would, because, you know, again, talking to Joel, he said we can't eliminate it, but we can control it. And this would be a way to, and one of my main concerns is actually changes in the groundwater fracture pattern. And that's exactly what this does, which is exactly why I said they need to test the wells before and after. Because it will change the well chemistry when they do the blasting, period. Um, it could change it, because you don't know which way the fractures run, unfortunately. Fractures are not, not, they're not based on slope, so they're based on a, a bedrock fractal pattern that, that you really can't define. So even if you're literally uphill from them, you actually, your fracture that feeds your well could be coming from that direction. And by whatever damage you do to that bedrock, because you're taking it out, you've now changed the infiltrate amount of water and the type and the source that goes into your well. So you're changing, you know, you think about with this massive rock underneath us, you're hitting it with a big hammer. We're just saying you gotta hit it with a little smaller hammer, so the effects won't be as much. And they make extraction a little bit more challenging for them, but it does lower their risk to property damage, changing wells. Those things aren't cheap, right? You destroy somebody's house foundation, that's not cheap. So I'm sure that's, that's, that's gotta be expensive for them.
Can I read some places, these are things that are going to be put in, into, uh, uh, other places with, where they're gonna do blasts, blasting? In other words, I guess what I'm saying is are these rules going to be coming in at the point, at the point five different places in the United States, do you think?
Well, they have, they have them already. Or Oregon and Nevada, the, the two states that I've been looking at on the D O T sites, they've already got them. Lot of places in Canada have them also, but again, it's a different country, uh, in, in some places. Their state laws can actually ban, if it's too close to, ban blasting if it's too close to, to houses and.
I just thought I read something in there that, that was what, what other places are going to start to do or are doing now.
I, I haven't heard that from Maine yet.
Oh, no.
No.
No, but I was thinking, well, if we do do it, it would be ahead of, would be ahead of, uh.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't always, we, we're, we're also gonna, it's very unlikely there's not areas in winter, there's very few areas in winter where you have hundreds and hundreds of acres. Where you're literally a mile or more away from homes and other properties, so that's really where you think about Blue Rock and some of the other big facilities, they're really where they're doing the blasting, they're usually quite a ways away from other locations. So not all of them by any means, but some, but quite a few of them. So that may be why it's not as a big concern for the state to change, because there's a lot of locations that have that natural buffer. So it would be, it wouldn't be a big concern because your chances of impacting anybody are a lot lower.
Even Saint Lawrence, uh, brothers in, in Sabato's, if you look at their overhead where they're at, there's very few residential homes
Yeah.
uh, around that area.
Yeah, I know in Augusta, they actually went in and bought, I think, eight homes right there on, because they kept damaging them. And they, and they just bought the house and said, we own them. Because it was more cost effective. Well, they own it and they're not gonna sell it as a property, you know, they, they basically demolished the home and and said it was just easier and more cost effective for them, because again, they were like, they were, you know, extracting and they were obviously getting closer to the road every ten feet. That they blasted, they were actually moving in that direction, so it gave them a bigger buffer, so.
That ended up.
Uh, it, I, I believe so, I think, I gotta think the homeowners were happy to, you know. Yeah, they might have, they might have got a good price, hopefully they got a good price for their house.
Can I ask a question? Okay, so I just have one, I personally, I'm, I, I seem fine with the point five, but I just always wanna question. Is there any other blasting that say a homeowner might need to do, and this is out of my own ignorance kind of on how some of these things are done? Is there any other reason somebody might need to use blasting? Other than just for quarry on a massive level? Putting a pool in, can you still do that at point five without an issue?
I think you're gonna be way below that unless you're. Cool in bedrock and you really wanna have a lot of sand around it. I mean, that, you're talking a pretty big, pretty big blast here. So I don't think you're going to be, I, I, I'm positive you're not gonna find a whole, unless they're, you know, work for me drilling and blasting and they really wanna to.
I blasted my backyard, my home in jury. And it was thirty five feet to the house, and I was sitting, the house sitting on ledge, I assure you that the blasting outfit out got, that got in the blasting. They did the blasting, ten yards of fill over it after they set all the explosives. And I, I was like a hawk walking my boundary.
Yeah.
You're absolutely right.
Yeah.
The levels are so low.
Okay, I just wanna make sure it wouldn't affect anything else in a negative way that I might not be thinking of. So if somebody wanted to blast for a pool, pool, they wouldn't have to go.
Right, because they're, yeah, unless they're moving, don't we have like yardage in here, right? Yeah.
Okay, alright. Then I'm in favor of the point five. I can't see any reason not to.
Well, what, how do we cite it?
We would have to change, we would have to have a motion to change.
Change the word.
Change, yeah, page twenty three and H, and it's, and instead of having the main D E P article reference, we would have to basically write our own and, and actually write the. They've got a paragraph, we could copy their paragraph and just change that one point two five to point five, and that would be bond.
Yeah, alright, that's why you said we guys change citation, but we've got to change it to something.
Yes.
I don't have.
You wanna read it?
Clarification, you're talking about omitting the reference to M D E P article eight A.
Yeah.
And you're gonna replace it with another reference?
Yes, yes. Yeah.
And that reference, do you know what reference is, you know, you need to look something up?
Or we may pull that exact ordinance, there's a paragraph about it, and just change that one number in that paragraph, and we may reference the document still, and then just add that paragraph with that change.
Is anyone from the public out there? There are people here, but they're not raising their hands, okay.
Are you done?
I could bore you for hours, but thank you very much for simplifying the groundwater effect of plastic damages. You put it a lot more, uh, eloquently than I do it. Again, it's, it's your business, I understand that, but uh, thank you very much and, and thank you all for considering this, I do appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, we voting to change, okay.
I have a moment?
Yes.
Hey, how are you? This is Steve McDermott, I just wanted to check in and I appreciate Dawn referencing earlier that there is the uh, Town of Winter Groundwater Protection Ordinance, but I, I would like to point out that the KV cog draft that was submitted did have protections for groundwater protection and the existing groundwater protection ordinance in Winter only notes one aquifer, and I'm assuming that's just due to the maps that were available at the time. But it does indicate that, um, the water protection areas are supposed to comprise aquifers and that the ordinance could be updated at any time when better maps were available. And I'm wondering if, since the planning board seems to be relying on the groundwater protection ordinance to ensure groundwater protection as opposed to layering something else into this ordinance. Which I think is always appreciated, again, streamlining and relying on the individual ordinances, would you, would, is the planning board intending to amend the groundwater protection ordinance to ensure that all known mapped aquifers are covered under that ordinance?
We're looking.
I mean, Maine has a significant aquifer, sand and gravel aquifer map. Um, that we could consider, you know, adopting, that's really the only known source of aquifers. And all of those pretty much exclusively are in and around lakes and streams. So, you know, given shoreland zoning, you'll find that most aquifers in, in Maine, um, as we define an aquifer. Again, significant sand and gravel aquifers are already, uh, pre-covered by those areas. There is occasions that they extend beyond, but there's very few in Kennebec County that they'd extend beyond the seventy five feet from the stream or a hundred feet from a, from a lake, um. There's, there's places where they, they may exist, but there's not gonna be many. Um, those are the only known aquifers, I mean ninety, I don't know, I can't remember the numbers, like ninety seven, ninety six percent of Maine is on bedrock drinking wells. And there are no defined bedrock well, bedrock aquifers in Maine. Uh, because unfortunately, we're sitting on a large chunk of rock, uh, with fractures all through it, and that's what we all drink from. So, and there is no way to define which way the water flows. Even though water flows with gravity, I know I've made that point here several times. Even though water flows with gravity, I know I've made that point here several times. But unfortunately, the fractures don't always go the way you think they would. Now, we've done plenty of studies, there's plenty of, plenty of scientific evidence to prove that, that there's, uh fracture patterns are not always based in the direction of the superficial uh bedrock. So, um, so I think our existing groundwater protection measures written into the ordinance I think take care of the groundwater protection, even though, and, but I, I would agree Scott, at some point if the state came up with a new defined aquifer map, we would want to evaluate that. And that's not just for mineral extraction, that's for any type of impacts if those significant aquifers. And, and realize that, you know, when I talk about these groundwater impacts and these groundwater drinking, most people see things on the news about California, right? California has three giant aquifers that are hundreds of miles long and they've contaminated them because they've drilled between them and they're, they're thousands of feet thick. Texas, the same thing, Colorado, the entire state is an aquifer, one aquifer. New England and specifically Maine is not like that at all. An aquifer the size of this room is large. Other than significant, no, seriously, other than significant sand and gravel aquifer, they don't exist like they do out west. We sit on rocks. We are a glacial outwash component. We got scraped clean ten thousand years ago and there's nothing left but what that little bit of dirt dumped on college. So we are not the same as a lot of what you see on TV and nationwide. We have a very different geology than they do. So again, our, our aquifers that we drink from are bedrock and they're local by nature. Because that infiltration happened over decades, but that's how that works. But there are significant sand and gravel aquifers mapped and we could use that map. Um, and I think the only one we have in the ordinance is because of a super fun site. So I believe that's really the reason that that's specifically because they don't want you going any, anywhere near the possible changing the flow patterns in and around that because of the super fun site.
I really appreciate that feedback and, and insight Greg, and one of the things I would just like to note is the beginning with habitat maps that are put out by Maine IFW identifies, you know, a fairly significant aquifer in the rural district, the only district where blasting is a, a mineral extraction would be allowed. And I just think it would be incumbent if there's a known aquifer in that area that we would want to ensure that if we're relying on one document to protect those activities, that we would ensure and update that that activity is protected, not something that's mapped later or potentially done at a later date.
I have that map, do you want me to go to see it?
No, it's, I mean, I, I, but that's a significant wetland, that's not necessarily an aquifer, it's not necessarily the same.
Thank you for your comment.
I get it.
Anybody else um from the public have anything to say?
Or raise the hand.
No one's raising their hand.
Nobody.
We are muted. So I, I think well, we know that we're there.
Okay.
We need to change.
Right, I think, I mean, I guess the question just needs to go to Dawn before I'd be willing to make a motion.
Yeah, I think so.
The question is, do we need to see that written out for um changing the changing the actual blast speed sound wave? Do we need that written out or could we approve that with that said change and bring that to the council?
You could approve it by stating that you want to remove the reference, just what you've done, but I would ask, I mean, the two of you are, are the ones that laid it out more specifically for someone to double check that if I pull it, I put it in, I make that one change, I would like someone to look at that language if that's.
Oh, that's fine, yeah. I don't, I don't mind reviewing it, but I'm just, I just don't want, I didn't wanna necessarily kick the can down the road if we feel like we're all in favor with these changes. I just felt like we should be able to approve it, but I have no problem. You know, you could send it to all of us and if, if a couple of us wanna say, yep, I read it, it's good and we're good, then that's fine.
I think it'd be a good idea to send it to the board.
Yeah. They wanna review it in the next week or something, then
That wasn't what we meant.
Right.
We can't deliberate via email, but you could just one way, yes or no, if it looks right, and if it's not, then we'll bring it back.
Yep.
Either, yeah, that's what we meant, or no, that wasn't.
But it's really worse when we don't think that it would.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have Dawn do it, then send it to a couple of people here and they're gonna check it and if they, they agree, then it's, then to go. And if the rest of us have something to say, well, I think we probably said it. I don't know how to. As long as people check it, Dawn, you're comfortable with it.
I am, it's a comfort level of the board and then, and then it's a done deal. So we don't have to go on and on here. If that can be made, should we make?
Make it official?
Yeah, should I do that? Should I do that? Make it, take a vote and
Well, you're gonna give it a conditions first or do you want?
Well, we're gonna vote on basically.
All at once?
Alright, didn't we have one we had to vote on that you've just changed? I'm sorry.
Well, I was gonna go through them. I was gonna go with, 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 you want me to try this? You tell me if you need to change it.
I'll tell you.
Okay. I have a motion that, I would like to make a motion um that the five uh items listed in our email that was sent to the board, um which is the page number and the table contents will be cleaned up. Um, that is a vote of yes and the board agrees that that needs to be included. Item number two, that article fi- uh article four dot five dot B dot one will be removed. We're not gonna include that, we're gonna leave the verbiage as is in the document. Item number three is article two dot four acceptability, uh and that will be uh made, the change will be made as listed. Uh, number four was article three dot B, that the first words, the mineral extractance operations would be struck. Um, this was an error and will be fixed, so we approve that one. Article number five, that we're going to follow uh Ed's suggestion on writing, which is the detonation mishfires may occur outside these times. A misfire must be reported to the Winter Police as soon as is recognized, soon as it is recognized. I had my thumb on the hit, sorry. And we're striking the CEO. And then article uh six, which is not included on here, but based on deliberations we're gonna add, is that article um fourteen, section H, uh we're going to remove the state reference uh and replace that with another reference, um which is going to include changing the uh speed of the blast uh sound wave from one point two five inch per second to zero point five inches per second. I was looking at that.
Very good. All in favor?
I just question, oh, at my allocation, this is already included, right, the air monitoring?
That's what, that's, that was my question, do we need to read that out again?
I thought that was the new.
Which one?
That is the new one.
That's the new version. It's part of it and I was approving that, I thought.
Okay, alright, that's, that's there, okay, good.
Everything else is as written.
That I was the same place you were.
Okay.
Okay, good, Jonas, we're voting on that now?
We're voting on the whole thing. We are, we're voting on the whole thing.
What, the whole ordinance?
Yep. Send it to the council. You know, ready?
I wanna see it all complete.
All in favor? Opposed?
Sorry.
One.
Sorry.
That way, but.
Oh, I just wanna see it all together with this.
It is complete, other than what Greg just said.
No, I know, I just wanna see it all in there and then I would say. Not gonna see the content.
Voted to accept this, this mineral extraction. Pass it to the, the council. And I have to say, everyone did a lot of work and they did a very good job at it and you helped us. And we, we tried to help you, obviously, we don't have fifty thousand people here. So I think this will all work out fine in the end. There'll be people that won't be happy, but there will be.
What's your next project? Downtown revitalization.
Okay, alright, good.
It feels good when the pain stops.
Well, right now, I'm gonna get caught up over there.
Minutes. I have other discussion.
Dawn, you wanna, you wanna go and?
Yep, so there's which is the minutes and then some chat discussion.
Yeah.
And you're all caught up in the minutes.
I have a comment on the minutes. Actually, I have two.
Now, we know what one is.
We know what one is. Second one is, I was not present at that meeting.
You weren't?
No.
Well, you're not gonna get paid then.
I, I was on the beach having a drink.
You were not there, were you?
I was not here, no. Somebody wasn't signing your name.
Which one you on, February twenty eighth?
Uh, twenty eighth, yes.
Yeah, I heard that.
But you weren't there.
He was on the beach.
I was on the beach having a drink.
Okay, anything else on that?
Since I wasn't there, I don't know about the rest. Well, I just had a general comment. Um, just when, when we move like, like Rick comes from being an alternate up to a voting member, should you leave alternate on it? Or should you remove it? I don't, I don't know. That's more of a question.
Need for each item?
Yeah, just when, when, when we look at that, I think last time, you know, if, you know, it, it, last time it was sort of like, should we remove alternate if he's actually a voting member? And then if he's just here as an alternate, put it as an alternate. I don't know, I'm just asking. That's why I guess what I'm thinking.
So later on, I voted on it.
Yeah. Well, especially if you made a motion or, you know, things like that, should that be removed or highlighted or, I don't know.
I, I'd say do application by application because it can change. So I will, I can call that out.
When you do the minutes, if, you know, if like Rick's a voting member tonight, he should be on that list and just remove the alternate.
Yeah.
And then he's on the list and next meeting if Jim's here and he's not a voting member, he goes back and he's an alternate. I don't know, I'm just definitely.
My referees themselves or I'll make it clear.
I don't know, it just, it seems like we should be sure they're voting members so we don't get ourselves into trouble.
I didn't actually think he was.
I see what you, I do what you.
Was Jim? Brent just brought that up, I don't remember seeing him for the week before.
Jim wasn't here, no. I don't think so. We were having all these issues with that.
That's right.
Yeah, because we had a lot of problems.
Oh, it's right, Jim.
Yeah, we all saw the changes. This is Dawn writing, I like to wait till it's
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, not boring. Alright, does someone wanna make a motion to make that change? Go right again.
For those changes we noted?
That is.
All in favor?
I have a question on a minute. Dawn, you and I talked about the minutes from the Tom Meiser page. I thought I saw that here someplace. Where we brought a follower brush or we approved the minutes?
I have to go back and look at the last meeting, I mean, when we looked at all those minutes.
No, it's the minutes we, we talked about the other day that it said it was tabled, but it was approved.
Yeah.
No.
But, yeah, I missed.
I don't know if the updated version was the one that you looked at.
I thought, I thought you brought always, you brought it forward tonight. Thought I saw him somewhere.
I didn't, I didn't, so.
Okay, everybody know what I'm talking about?
I think so, yeah.
When we approved the Tom Meiser project, the minutes that we approved last meeting said that we tabled it. And indeed, we approved it. And that was the November eighth, was it? November eighth.
We saw that case twice, the first time we tabled it, the second time.
Tabled in September.
Yeah.
And the second time we approved, approved, yeah. The minutes reflected, I should have caught it last time. We approved the last meeting as being tabled again.
Oh, okay.
In fact, we approved it, so that's what I was talking about.
Yes, we did it.
So you're gonna bring it to the next meeting?
Yes, on the agenda.
We do.
We do.
We did, we're supposed to do homework. Did everybody do their homework?
Yeah.
Alright.
I, I emailed on it.
I did not do any homework. So my thought was that for the next meeting, and right now I have two applications and one of them is probably gonna come off. Um, so it's a short agenda in terms of a development review. If you wanted to look at that table and everyone's prioritization of those items um and the policies and procedures draft coming up with a, a final document with that, so I propose those as the on the next agenda under the business.
Okay, everybody got that?
Yes.
So right now.
We got something on the policies and procedures.
We're supposed to be looking.
And I can send it out again.
It's, I think it's in this. Right? Yeah, I can have it all laid out for us all night. Yeah, here it is.
So we're supposed to pick three?
Wait, why don't you go to redo this and like? The um conditionally use application?
Yeah, I have notes on the
I was kinda questioning.
How many did you ask for in the very beginning?
Asked for five, there's no, I just picked that number because I know that realistically we're not gonna do five and it's not a good time, but I think that everyone's gonna pick the same five, no problem.
Okay, can we quickly go all over that? See what people are thinking, you wanna?
We don't have everyone's feedback yet, so I mean, that's a, you wanna have some general discussion, but I was gonna
That was important. I just kinda like to get a head start on people where people, where people are think, what people are thinking of. We can, can do a roundtable if you want to. You can talk.
What are we talking about?
The cop plan.
Cop plan?
Yeah, we had to go pick five things.
Okay, is that our homework?
That was your homework.
Was that our homework, was that given today?
No, that was given
If anybody read this, these little, I mean, I've got several different ones, but, you know, like this one's um manage, economic management. And then we have the next one, public policy and strategies. And then we have another one.
So those are all chapters of the comprehensive plan. Two thousand and ten on the update and I tried to combine some of the things that were brought to work in two thousand and ten. So relevant. So that, those are the tables that I'd like everyone to look at and say, the cop plan, maybe prioritize these things in terms of short term, mid term. Um, but even within that, where is the board at? Because we need to start pecking the layup.
This is what you put in the back of the binder, correct.
So in yellow, she has noted where we, where we're meant.
So it's, there was at least one that I have highlighted that I thought we should have been noted. Um, I think, you know, one of the things we've, that come up multiple times for us, it wasn't highlighted in there for us, was specifically the water and sewer, public water and sewer and where that is, because that drives, that, to me, that drives our development. Right? I mean, that is an important piece of the puzzle and we weren't included in that, and I thought that was kind of odd. I, I know we can't say, oh, we need public water here, but I think we should be involved in the discussion if they want to involve us in all these other avenues, all these other topics, we have to know where the water and sewer is going because that's really what's going to drive development in my mind, because, you know, a lot of our board charter is to protect the water bodies, right? We're environmentally sound, we're saying where are we protecting the water bodies? And that, those go hand in hand, so we have to be part of that. So I thought that was weird, I think I wrote down one of the numbers that sounded like it was fit, but you didn't have that as one of the highlighting ones?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I just read everything because I'm just silly, but, uh, I mean, I, I went and just said that one particular item, I can't remember, I just sent the email like an hour ago. Uh, but, or two hours ago now. But anyway, I think that's one thing that the board should be part of, and that, to me, that would be my top priority is to know where it is feasible to expand water and sewer. Not necessarily, I know there's a long public process, I know there's lots of issues, but where it is feasible and where would be economical to expand public water and sewer. I know if you talk to some of the people with water, you know, the water district may say nowhere, because we're at capacity or whatever, but I know we have a main trump line running down two oh two that we could tap into, and there is costs associated with that and everything, but should we be discussing that? It can be done. It could be, it could be done. Um, you know, a lot of our pump stations, like we did back in the, I think it was the eighties or nineties, that's why Memorial Drive has all sewage. Because that was, they said all of this sewage is going into the lake, we want to add sewer here. Well, now all of our lakes look like that, not just Memorial Drive, not the sewage, I meant just the, the fact that they're all developed. Yeah. Right? They're all development around all of them, should we be adding more sewer? You know, handling more sewer around some of the other water bodies. Yeah. You know, that's with resource protection, that's what we're talking about. And I'm not saying, you know, we would need obviously help from the Public Works Department on what the cost is, does that make sense? Is, you know, how many pumping stations, what would the, you know, overall infrastructure cost? We would need to have some kind of general guidance, but I think we should be at least in on that discussion. And I think we should be driving that discussion because that was ninety percent of the comp plan, what they're driving at, that's important. To know, oh, we want to develop this, we want to make this, we want to make this, well, all those economic factors, a limitation could be the fact that they don't have public water sewer. So.
If there's consensus on the board on that, I'll pass that information along and when the, the council's going to have more public input before they adopt the document, but I can get that to them before any further public input as well.
That's good. Everybody agree?
Yeah.
We don't have to make a.
Just for clarity, were you proposing? Uh, I'm just proposing that, I mean, like they, they had a couple of things talking about public, public water and sewer, and the planning board was not included on the side table.
Okay.
And I was just saying, when they have those discussions, it would be nice to be included in them.
I guess.
I wasn't adding a whole new item, anything like that, even though I think it should be discussed, I think we should be included on those items because I feel like public water and sewer should be part of the discussion. We should be in on the discussion.
I agree with that.
That's it.
Yeah.
We can't be the drivers of it, that.
Right.
There's, there's no way we could be the drivers of it, but I think we should be involved in it.
I think that's true of a lot of these, where they've got our name on there, we're not going to be the driver.
Well, yeah, that's very true, that's very, but that's why I was saying for that one in particular, I think we should be included on.
What, what I'll intend to do then is wait until after the next meeting and you have more discussion, because there may be other things that come up that you want to forward, and I'll do that at that time.
If I understood you, that is in section two underneath, uh, public, there's still the. Two, two point encourage local store and water district coordinate land services, pensions and future land use plan. We're on that one. Two, two is, if public water supply expansion anticipates, defi, and protects suitable sources, we are not.
That might be the.
I think that's in front.
Yeah.
So it's two point two that.
Right.
Two point two, I think is the one.
Yeah, and it's also in finance and development, it's nine point one and nine point two, public facility. Nine point one and nine point two. I think that's also mentioned, and we're not included.
So Donna, you have those specific sections, great.
Nine point one and nine point two and the other one you referenced in your emails.
Two point one, two point two, and two point one we are on. Yeah, but two point two we're not. And that's what we talked about was development.
Yeah, yeah.
We're not on.
And again, not being the driver, just included in the discussion, we would all. Yeah, overall, I thought there were very few of them, but we should be the driver of.
Yeah.
Might have only been one, they talked about environmental, the rest of them were, I think we're just along for the ride or part of the discussion.
I think under housing one, one, where they talk about increasing density, decrease loss size.
But I felt probably be involved in that. Well, yeah, but I felt like we've already, I mean, that's, we've already had those discussions and I felt like with the the excessive dwelling structure, we've already covered that, I was like, haven't we done that? Did we check that? It kind of felt like it, but I wasn't sure.
We were looking at changing the ordinance to incorporate like.
Right.
Setbacks and road stuff.
Well, we did, we had to include that because we had to rush it, remember back in December?
Well, I don't think setbacks from the road.
No, we didn't, we didn't discuss the table, we didn't adjust all the table and the lot sizes, so we, but we talked about those and that's on our agenda, so I kind of felt like that had to happen.
Don't worry about it. It sounds like when looking through the historical documents, it looks like a year ago you discussed those changes. I don't have a copy of them yet, but I think that the, it appears the discussion didn't come to a conclusion because nothing went to the council, so.
Right, it didn't, it, it didn't, and that was because of five away compliance. That was, that was the whole reason, Ed had made a lot of pages and, um, and, and we had, he'd incorporate a lot of our comments and some cleanup to the primary ordinance, so, I mean, he had the version that we were going to use, but then we kind of got derailed with five away compliance.
People, yeah, and never get completed.
And we didn't complete it, so, but I think we had a lot of the discussion.
David was kind of pushing a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think we had a lot of the discussions, I don't think it would take as long, because I think we aired a lot of the concerns, so I felt like we were a good chunk of the way there, and Ed was doing some other cleanup where it, we kind of referenced, sometimes we'd write things out like three different places, the same thing, and you're kind of like, why would, why, why should we do that?
We had some things in section where it didn't apply.
Exactly, yeah.
In sections where it should apply universally and.
Right.
So those.
Just, just some cleanup, and I felt like we were getting close.
Do you have, can I get a copy of the, the work that you did, that you all did, and I don't see it.
I was going to say, I think, I think it's in an email, I, I didn't dig back.
It's a mess at this point.
That's okay, I, I can clean it up by asking you questions and incorporating the language into the ordinance, I mean, if you're comfortable with that.
And there's got to be some.
Yeah, we had, we had to print out, I know we had a.
I'd be happy to share, but, and unfortunately, it was probably at a point where it's, uh, would be more confusing than anything else.
Um.
Maybe we could sit down at the table and you look at your notes and, um, and mark a copy.
My, my suggestion on this is, um, we've incorporated some changes since then. If I could get a word copy of the current ordinance with all of the changes we have currently, it'd be a lot easier for me to go in and work with that and then, then come back with something that, that now we could talk about rather than have a bunch of missing pieces.
That chart we've got in the, uh, ordinance with setbacks and all that.
Yeah.
Pretty sure, I don't know who did it, maybe David did.
Well, David.
Put one out and he changed those.
Yeah, well, we all talked about it, and I think we were more or less in agreement, but that's what I was putting in that new one too.
Yeah. So. We could find that, I think.
Oh, I have that, I, I have all that paperwork, but it's just, it would be such a mess, if I hand that to Don, it's probably. It's great.
Well, a lot of the stuff that I'm working on now is a little crazy, so I'm, whatever works for you, Adam, I'll take it.
I, I think, I, I really think, I would feel better getting a word copy of a current ordinance. Uh, can't go online, except PDF, can't do anything with that.
I can give you the word document.
If you, if you want to email me a copy of, word, word copy of that. Uh, and I could set up work on that. Now, uh, there's a couple ways to do it, I can go in and I can just make edit, or I can do the underlying strikeout. But I guarantee, if I do that, it would be, it, it will totally blow up. It would be, it would be so much underlined and striked out and moved and, and it, it would, it would almost, almost be unreadable. So.
We have to post, like, any changes that ultimately be made, we have to post, um, make public and for you all to be able to review them, so at some point it has to be underlined, striked out, because you have to see what's changed.
Well, if that's the case, it's going to be all, all I'm striking.
Well, I think that.
Cowboy chat.
Yeah, the version I've got, the email I've got for July twenty fifth, has the updated table, and it has a list of all the things you did. Yeah, I, I did, and then you said what I have not done, and then you went through all the things you had not done, that was the version that we brought to the meeting that we were working with and talked about, so it's a draft version, I could send it to you, Don.
That would be great.
But it's, it's.
And glad, I'd be glad to send you what I got.
Yeah, it's, and, but I know, I know, I, I think we made changes after that, but it was really the five away compliance that threw us really sideways in terms of moving it forward.
And did I mention at the last meeting, I put in the line item, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the top manager would, would did that favorably, obviously, to the council who makes the decision, but that would be helpful.
Yeah, the new software we just got is awesome, that's all I can say when it comes to that. It was expensive, it's like thirty five hundred dollars for the license, but I just, we just did like three PowerPoints and she was doing them in like an hour, making a five away compliant, I'm like, this is awesome.
Wow.
Oh, it was just amazing. It just put the old text, put all the formatting in and put all the boxes, it was just, the software did it all, it was like, wow. So that, you know, somebody that couldn't see had a, had a sight impairment could use that.
So, yeah. What's the plan? We're going to get what we have, and then, yeah, okay. Yeah. And then when do we start working on it, I guess is the question. Come to agreement on it, I guess.
In our next open.
Well, so this is why I want to look at the table and have people prioritize, right? What, what it is you want to be working on, this sounds like a short term item because you've already put so much into it.
Right.
So I would, I would suggest that you look at that sooner rather than later. So at the next meeting, you have one, maybe two applications, um, and then workshop items, so you could start at that.
At the bottom.
If it's ready and you're ready.
You'll have some kind of format for us to look at.
Potentially, it depends on Greg and Ed's schedule, if they have time to get me that information and then I can work with it. So either then or the next meeting after that, it sounds like you probably could roll into it. Could I mention one thing that I think we should be listed on? Sure. It, is the recreation policies and strategies. Two point two, working with the land trust and conservation org, organizations to pursue opportunities, protect important open space and recreational land. Two point two is, that's not the same one that Greg already, I have nine point one and nine point two. And two point two.
This is other, another.
Another reply, yeah.
A difference like.
Yeah, the recreation.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
I don't know how much it would have to do with us, but it could potentially with different, you know, us gleaming, different zoning and what's around there was likely to be a list for other things.
Yeah.
When I look under the housing, where it talks about allowing addition of at least one accessory per, et cetera, isn't that what we just told them?
Yeah.
So that table was created prior to that work.
Yeah.
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 They also noted tiny housing, they want tiny houses.
That's what I thought, yeah.
The state, the state had legislation around that now because there weren't codes for it, at one time you couldn't build a tiny house and meet codes. Um, but my understanding is not to look at more closely is that the state has already made changes so that as long as our code references that, and I believe it does, it's a string that you can build a tiny, tiny house today, so I can follow up on that.
They also had stuff in there called modular homes and mobile homes.
And none of that is, um, it's all permitted, to my knowledge, under the current regulation, so I have some of those flagged to look into, but I believe that those are in place, and then it talks about condos. And I think that you might have that on your list, but a condominium is a product, not a particular, I'm sorry, it's a form of ownership, it's not a product. So you can condo a boat slip or a mailbox or, or a dwelling unit, and so that's another one that we want to look at that I'm, I'm a little like, need some more background on.
What about modular, or not, yeah, modular homes? Are they considered just like a stick built home?
I believe it is, they're, yeah, they are.
Yeah.
That's what I. Interestingly, they, they kind of classify them as manufactured, but, uh, functionally, they're just like stick built home.
Okay, I was thinking of manufactured more like double wide.
Well.
They fall under. Yeah, it, it, it all depends on whether their foundation is permanent or not.
Yeah.
That's the big definition that I heard, the definition was.
Uh, and mine is also, uh, like, what they call mobile home, it's actually built on its own frame.
Yeah, yeah.
Where the modular is, is built and.
And put on a.
It is set on a temporary frame for transport, but that's it.
Yeah.
I guess another way to put it is that structurally, there's a drastic difference between the floor structures on mobile versus a manufactured. Manufacturers are designed with much, much more meat of structure to go on a foundation.
Well.
Well, modular.
Excuse me.
Modular home.
Modular is a form of.
Manufacturing.
But.
It's.
Modular is a, is a subset of manufacturing.
Yeah, mobile home is manufactured too.
Mobile home can come in sections as well, but yeah, the difference is the structure that is the base. And they both are delivered on structural, uh, structural beams. But one goes on a foundation, the other one goes on a slab of blocks, and it's a matter of distribution that way on that slab, so that the subfloor or the floor, uh, structure is suitable.
Yeah, and I, I have a modular home, it's, it's just like a stick built.
Correct.
In fact, it's.
They are, they're both stick built.
It's more sturdy.
Now, you want to confuse the issue, go to a concrete slab building, which is sturdy.
Yeah.
There's no floor involved, other than the. Well, that's another.
That's still a.
Hybrid, that's a hybrid.
Yeah.
What about a rebuild?
Pardon? You build a concrete house.
Correct, or a fall house, which is a concrete house.
They did that.
We may need to get Mark in here for some of those conversations.
Yeah, yeah.
Mark.
The other one, one appreciation, one appreciation. We got into quite a discussion on that on the census because they had all those different.
Oh, really?
I don't know if I ever did get a straight answer, but one time they told us, well, it doesn't have any wheels under it.
Yeah, but what if they took the wheel off?
It had wheels that one.
They do take them off after they.
Oh, sure.
They, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
They usually do.
Yeah, yeah, most of them they do.
Yeah, then I've said they run the wheels, man, I wonder if you like after a couple of years.
Yeah, no, you would, you wouldn't want it on the wheels.
Betty, I got another question, another vein, we talked a bit about approving the digital map.
Mm-hmm.
Somewhere in the near future.
It is currently Joel from KVCOG is, um, merging it with the assessing data It is currently Joel from KVCOG is merging it with the assessing data. And updating the groundwater protection district on that. And then it will go to the council. Cause there's no changes, right? It's gonna be, it's that representation that you all did that Don and you and the board looked at. And so it's it's, it's on the list moving towards the council agenda, but Joel's still working with it.
But this view, this group has never reviewed it, to say go follow.
Yeah.
Pardon? This group has not reviewed, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we started it, but we haven't.
Don and I did the work with Joel.
We didn't start it.
This committee has never accepted our work.
We tried to review it and the projector wouldn't work.
I think you should add that to the next workshop.
I assume you already.
Well, thank you for bringing that up, cause I was not aware of that. I, I, I just read that. So I think we should look at that in the short term.
We had Joel in, and Joel was here. The projector didn't work and we hold on.
Do we have a projector that we can use now?
Our work.
There's one on the floor, you're thinking of that.
That little tabletop one that will.
Yeah, it's.
I can run the fire station, it worked very well.
That's right, yeah.
It is, I think it's an assertive, Don, I would just, Joel needs to be here, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he's the one that does the projection, he's got it on his computer. It's not a big process, we just haven't done it.
Well, I mean, we have the PDF that we could look at, the image, just, we can see where the lines are. They're static though, like, I don't know what Joel, if you could move them as you discussed it, or if we could mark up a PDF for him to.
It's helpful if he's here, if Ed says, I got a problem with that one right over there. And Joel says, okay, let me fix that. And we move on.
Yeah.
Because I'm gonna guess ninety eight percent of the work is done. And we may not know the other two percent, but you may.
Yeah, that's why we want Joel there. That's right, that, when we went through it, that's what he did.
Exactly, we corrected, he did it right there in his box. It was like he had to go back.
We had the map, fifty two maps.
He's good at it.
We went through fifty two maps with Joel and we fixed everything so they matched.
You two, right? You two did it, right?
Yeah.
I mean, worst case scenario, we take notes for him.
So that's what we need to do. So we're ready for what you're talking about.
Absolutely. I, I misunderstood. I thought that that had already been done. And Joel just got appointed. He is, um, now the director of KVCOG. So I know he's straddling, you know, passing things on and, and his new role, so, um.
Well, let's get it done with Joel.
So, yeah, I will reach out to him, see what his timeframe looks like, uh, you know, just keeping in mind that. Schedule.
We should have it done. I don't think we're going through everything.
More general question.
You all gotta, you all gotta buy onto what Don and I did with Joel, like, basically.
The one meeting. One meeting, right?
Well, and he could, what's the PDF version and send that to us, that way we could pre-review it. And then we just would go through the actual GIS layer. That might be a lot quicker and say, you know, did anybody have any questions? And then we, then that's on public, on the public records, whatever.
Right.
And we would say, you know, bring up anything we had concerns about or errors, we wanna look in more detail. Cause the PDF is, you know, you can zoom in and stuff, but. Why are we gonna compare it to? Cause the only thing there is to compare it to are the physical maps, which is why these two did it.
I think that we were letting them speak for us by doing.
I was thinking, you know, possible gaps, possible overlay errors, things like that, but you would not be able to know how it compared to.
We did.
You're right, yeah, right, that's. That's what we're saying is.
By map.
That part, that part is done. So now I'm just thinking of errors where there's overlay issues, where things were on top of each other. Or there's questions on the detail layers, um, but maybe he's already cleaned all that up.
And I think we did that.
Yeah. I, I think, I think that was the hope, is that you did all that. But is there anything that got missed?
Overview.
Yeah.
Approve it, go on.
I have a PDF that I believe includes all the changes from previous discussions with you all. I believe I have one that's supposed to, that you all haven't looked at. So we could start by, I can start by emailing that to you. Okay. Kind of see where you're at.
Yes, the rest of us, I don't want to see.
Well, and I, yeah, I don't think it really makes sense if we had, if we had Don and Rick and Joel all go over the paper, the digital conversion, but I don't think there's any need to do that again.
No.
I think it's more just a question of, okay, do we see anything glaring? Do we see anything that we don't like or wanna comment on? And then we bring it to the board for discussion and public input or whatever. It, it probably is, but I'm just saying that would follow the due process in my mind correctly. That we just say, yep, I've looked at it, I'm good, let's put a motion, then we move it to the council and.
Or, or you see some issue.
Or we want something.
Bring it up, let's fix it.
Right.
Yeah, and then we're also giving the public time to look over that, right, online?
Yeah.
So if they catch anything with their own property that seems incorrect.
Right.
Bring it back in.
Right.
So it's supposed to be a representation of the, of the, um, tax maps. It's not supposed to include any changes.
Right.
Otherwise, that's a whole public hearing process. Okay.
Right, right. But, but at times, you're going from paper to digital, there's always gonna be interpretation. There has to be. There's just, that's the way it works. Um, so, you know, that, that, so it, it's not changes, you could say it's corrections, right? And I'm very distinct with those words. Because when you use those words, you're safe from saying, this is not a update. This is a correction. Because the paper line, sometimes you draw a little fat, you draw a little crooked, you draw a little whatever. And the lines don't line up. And you're like, well, that, that doesn't make any sense. It, it looks like that should be the proper line. Let's make the border that property line. Cause then. That, well, that's exactly what you said. You said, you know, we're not gonna have these five foot gaps where it's like this person has a little bit of their lawn. It's in a different zone. We're gonna be like, what the heck is that? You know.
We started with Joel. It didn't line up.
No, it won't.
We fixed all.
It, it won't, because I mean, the paper maps, they're drawn on a scale, they're on a different scale, that they won't, they won't line up.
Right.
One of the next steps that was gonna happen was that it was gonna be notice to the public and linked to the website so the public could review it. That was supposed to be part of the review process.
I think that's after town council, is that it?
That was supposed to, that pretty happened.
Before.
That was gonna be the next step.
Before, and then it goes to the town council.
It was supposed to be a public notice process. And, and people, so people could go and look at their own property.
Exactly.
And say, hey, this is right or this isn't.
Right.
And then somebody would have to look at it and see if it's right or isn't.
Right, well, you're giving them an opportunity to say, you know, is there something wrong here that you identified? Right. That's all. You're just giving them an opportunity. Doesn't mean everybody's going to, it just means if somebody does and they have an issue, they can bring it up and we can look at it. And say, what does it look like on the paper map? What does it look like here? Oh, well, this correction, we slid this over to match the property line. That's right.
But has that even been posted?
No.
No.
Okay, so, to me, the, the process is, I should review it, get it posted. And that's a, a secondary step. It needs to happen. And by the way, that's gonna be an ongoing process.
We don't need to show town council first anything before we post it for public review?
Ready to go.
Yeah, okay.
They, just like tonight.
Cause then they would do a final approval.
Yeah, they're, they're doing the final approval, but we do public before. If the public.
And how long do we leave it up?
Supposed to give us feedback, and then we adjust accordingly if necessary before we pass it.
Well.
How long would we leave it up for public review?
Forever.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but before we would give it to the council.
Did you hear what Don said?
What?
They're, they're coupling those maps with the evaluation process. I guarantee you, as that, that process evolved, people are gonna look at their property in those maps and come to us and corrections. It's gonna be a natural process.
Yeah.
It's gonna go over, what are they talking about, twenty five for the reevaluation?
Twenty five.
Twenty twenty five, what's your reevaluation?
Oh, I thought it was twenty twenty seven. I don't know.
Okay. But that said, that's what you're getting ready.
You've got two years to fund it.
So, a lot of that's gonna happen, cause a lot of people are gonna pay attention. Between now and then.
Oh, yeah, right.
So I think the next step is, I should review it with Joel's help. And then get it on the website and make, make it available. And then we go from there. And then the council has to approve it as well, cause they're gonna integrate it with the evaluation process.
And then it'll be a fabulous tool.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
But I agree, we don't wanna let it sit. I, I guess the longer it sits, the more other maps, the layers that could be created and modified. And then all of a sudden, you're on an old version of a map and a new version of a map. Now you have to do another digital rectification because. Oh, it is, it's a nightmare.
I guess we oughta have a process for how we're gonna address those.
Feedback.
You get feedback and then we'll.
Well, I think, I think we would have to look at the paper maps and say, what does the paper map show? Cause we are.
Well, that's how you do it, but I'm saying.
And it would say, are they right?
Then does it go to the CDO or?
It could, I mean, it could go.
Process of the ordinance, right?
It goes back to us.
If there's comments on the maps, I would think they'd come to me because I'm gonna work with you.
Yeah.
Right. And if it's, if it's a cha- a change is a whole different thing, but if it's just like cleanup, understandable. Then that you all can discuss that year, and the other ones we'd have to set aside.
And, and you're gonna be talking to Mark a lot about it, cause we did.
Yeah.
In the process.
Yeah.
We talked to Mark quite a bit about questions.
Yeah, I, I can envision a variety of comments on this. Some being zoning comments, others being the, basically what the tax map says. As a board, we don't have any control of the tax map, do we?
No, and they're not survey quality, so.
That's still, that's still an approximate line. Those are, those are available, those are approximate lines. I mean, anytime you ask for questions, you can get some, but those are not questions we answer. The only thing that would come to us, I mean, and we could say, if there are a list of them, Don could bring them to the meeting and say, hey, we had these three questions come in for clarification. We go pull up the projector, we all have the paper maps, we say, what do we think? If it's on the paper, well, if, if again, it's a question, the line is in the wrong spot, like we moved it. Or, oh, you know, we moved it from the paper. They thought they were X and they were Y, and we go look at the maps. No, actually, you're Y. Well, then it doesn't come to us because they were just wrong.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's an interpretation, if it's one of these boundary issues, we can look at it as a group and decide, okay, this line got adjusted to that property, does that make sense?
Right.
You know, maybe they wanted to have the front ten feet commercial or something. And it's like, no, that's, doesn't really make sense. So, and then, then it becomes, do we accept this as a correction or not? To me, it's like, it only comes to us if it's truly an interpretation.
A correction.
If it's a true correction. Exactly. We're not talking about.
Half in this zone, half in that zone. I want my property aligned there, that's not.
No, right, that's the, no, we have to, we have to make it a line. We have to make it a line. And it's, 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 again, it's a digital, I mean, paper to digital conversion, that's what we're doing. So it's only if they have a correction with our interpretation, because the paper map is a little fuzzy. But then as a board, I think we can make the decision of, well, which way we wanna lean. And that person can come or go online and be part of the meeting and say, I think that's wrong. But we can then vote and say, we think this is the interpretation we should use, and nobody can.
Yeah.
Theoretically, they would have a harder time arguing with it.
So can we agree, we have done any, yeah, the project soon?
I take it. I think we should put that on soon.
I can't speak for Joel's time, but I'll do what I can, um, for the next meeting. And, and then I'll talk to him and see what it looks like on his end. But in the meantime, I'll start, you know, getting materials for a workshop.
And if we're at a point, we could post it publicly, that might be worthwhile. Because, again, those comments, we would want to have for a public meeting. But I think that could happen sooner rather than later. Even if we didn't even have it or review it, if we didn't have Joel next time, we could put it on the agenda to make it as an item to say, we want, we're, we're okay with the PDF being posted. If that seems reasonable to everybody else. We'd be able to vote on that. And then that would give two, four weeks or whatever, the public to comment. And then when we have Joel, we could be actually doing those possible, addressing those possible additional corrections to the interpretation correction that we were already doing. If there are any.
This is gonna change the priority.
Well, I think it just shifts it back. I, I don't think, I don't think it changes much. I think it would just be.
No, no, I mean, and then.
It would be four to six weeks.
Well, we've talked about what's.
They keep changing.
Yeah, I think, I think it has to be in April and, and if, how long we want that open for public comment would be the, and well, again, we could decide that next week.
I agree with you. I, I agree.
And it might depend on a bunch of old bills.
I agree, I just gotta be finished. I mean, that was.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want that out there.
No, getting people to review it and comment in advance is gonna be very difficult, just through the best that we can, but it's a lot of time, cause when they put it for a bill and come in, they go, oh, wait a minute, yeah.
Well, but again, you know, Rick, people are still gonna have concerns. But again, if we're just making a digital version of the paper, they can go and complain about the, the paper version. They can complain about that. There's nothing wrong with that. But that doesn't mean if we're not doing rezoning, we're not doing rezoning.
Not at this time, correct?
So. But once it's digital, then we could say, okay, maybe we can go and decide how we wanna redraw those. Talk to the, you know, comp plan and what the future plans are and those things. That makes it a lot easier for anybody to interact with. Or look at how they might wanna future change it. You know, do we wanna expand the industrial zone, shrink this industrial zone? Where does the village zone end? All those questions. You know, that we wanna make any of those changes.
Big discussions. Yeah.
Future discussions. We're just saying, move it from paper to digital.
Get the tool ready for those discussions.
Exactly.
I, I would like to know, just for my own interest, I guess, maybe what what people put on their paper is the first thing we've got needed to be done. I really, I'm, I'm just really curious. Like, people thought after reading all of that, did, you wrote in, what was the most important thing you? What? I put one point one housing. And the second one with two point one, economic development.
One point one was high on.
Okay, yeah.
I, I kinda felt like we were addressing some of that.
Yeah, yeah.
So I feel like, yes, it's definitely on the, but I feel like it's already on the list. So if you're asking what we add to the list, I might say.
I'm asking what you think.
That's, I think, I think it is high, and that's why we wanna address.
That's what you think is.
I, but I feel like we're already, that's our, our list and we're working. So we just need to keep it there, yeah.
What do you guys think?
I agree. I'm excited for where we start.
Yeah, yeah.
Getting that type of thing together so we get more people, more factories, more growth.
Well, it just, I mean, even just addressing the table in our sheet, the, um, the accessory dwelling structure, all of that, I think.
That's right.
We gotta tie, we gotta tie all the pieces together here.
And that goes.
It does. It, 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 it all fits together. That, that, that's, I think, important.
Yeah. Oh, it does all fit together.
It does.
You can't do one without the other, really. That's good, that's funny. Does anyone have a different one?
I have a review to get to.
I didn't pick a top one, I just picked one. I did, I had.
I still haven't done my homework.
One point one?
I'm more of a responsible development on the housing end of things.
It doesn't really say.
I'm not, yeah, I'm kinda going to the other. I don't want more people. I'll take some more businesses.
So you wanna look at your. Subjecting regulations, make sure it's quality development, is that right?
Right, exactly. And in the right spots and not just willy nilly throughout the town and.
Yes, that's what this is, to put it in a response.
Take some more.
Open on, yes. Certain areas.
They do have to listen.
It's, Jamie said she takes more people, and I said, if you must.
But yes, we want to respond, build any houses.
Yeah.
But that's, that's why we're looking.
Well, that's interesting. I just thought that was interesting, cause we had talked about it. When I went over, after, after, after we talked about it, I was like, hmm, I wonder what everybody else. So I think that's good to know, cause that actually includes a lot from each of the subjects.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, we have a good board here.
Well, I, I had seven or eight, but I think someone goes.
Yeah, yeah, you, you were supposed to do that, man. How did you do?
Well, we're not gonna be able to get to that night, so as long as we have the top.
You, and the top few seem to be about, about the same thing.
So far.
So far, yeah.
These guys are gonna just throw it off completely.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure, absolutely.
And I kinda looked at it in a way where, um, I did first listen to the short term, going mid, um, a long term